And welcome to the Select Board, Monday, April 7th, 2025, meeting in the McCoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. We are broadcast live on local cable, Channel 8 and 1072, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, mashbma.gov/Channel8. It is 5:03 and we're convening this meeting in open session. We will start off with a Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible)
I would like a moment of silence, but before we bow our heads, I would like to... Mashpee lost an icon this morning and a friend. Bobby Weeks of Mashpee passed away this morning. And I would like to have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay. We will start off review and approval of meeting minutes, Monday, March 10th, 2025, regular session and executive session, and Monday, March 17th, 2025, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. Thank you. 5:05, public hearing. Michaela, would you read the public hearing, please?
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 130, Sections 57 and 60, the Mashpee Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the application filed on March 12th, 2025, by the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, 483 Great Neck Road South, Mashpee, Mass., 02649, for renewal of Shellfish Grant Number 12, 8 acres, Papanassepp Bay. Said hearing will be held on Monday, April 7th, 2025, at 5:05 PM in the McCoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. You can submit comments and questions via email to selectboard@mashbma.gov prior to the meeting date and time.
Okay. Thank you, Michaela. Chris Havis, Shellfish Constable?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everything's up to date, everything's paid, all the reports are in. I have no issues with this going forward.
Okay. Any questions for Chris? We're good?
I have none.
Okay. I'd like a motion.
Anything?
Any discussion from the audience on the... No? Do I have a...
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And myself a yes. Thank you. Now, a motion to approve the renewal of the grant.
Motion to approve renewal of Shellfish Grant 12, 8 acres, Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. You're good.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay. Poll hearing. I need you to read that one, Michaela.
The Town of Mashpee Select Board will conduct a poll hearing on petition W-0 number 19543911, dated January 27th, 2025, from N-Star Electric Company, DBA, EverSource Energy, to install approximately 40 feet of 2x4 PVC conduit from new pole box 1023-042 to customer installed pad mount transformer 1023045 on Spinnaker Drive, Mashpee, Mass. The proposed location is necessary to provide new electric service to a customer located at 39 Spinnaker Drive, Mashpee, Mass. Said hearing will take place on Monday, April 7th, at 5:10 PM in the McCoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. You may submit questions and or comments via email to selectboard@mashbma.gov prior to the hearing or by contacting this office directly at 508-539-1401.
Thank you, Michaela. Wayne, did we receive any literature or anything besides what we have?
Okay.
And nobody's here from N-Star? Oh, we do. Good. Thank you. Jessica?
Thank you very much. Marissa Jackson with EverSource. I'm here to address any questions, if there are any. In short, again, what we're proposing is approximately 40 feet of two 4-inch conduit and one pole box, and this will be to accommodate a project for a pump station at 39 Spinnaker.
Okay. Very good. Any questions? Any questions from the audience? I have none. Close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
John? And I'm a yes. Now, we need a motion for the petition for the... For the petition of W-019543911.
So moved.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Okay. Next, Michaela, would you read?
I'll start then.
The public hearing?
We need to wait till 5:30. Oh, we can start. Okay. Pursuant to the Code of the Town of Mashpee, Section 156D, the Mashpee Select Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 7th, at 5:15 PM in the McCoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. The purpose of said hearing is to discuss the private-to-public road conversion of Godfrey Road and Barbary Circle as shown on the plans entitled "Road-Taking Plan, Godfrey Road and Barbary Circle" in Mashpee, Mass., dated February 25, 2025, and prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. Copies of the plans may be viewed in the office of the Select Board at Mashpee Town Hall. You can submit comments and questions via email to selectboard@mashbma prior to the meeting date and time.
Thank you, Michaela. Catherine, the red? Hi, Catherine.
So this is a petition article before the board. So the butters were notified of the cost of what the road conversion would be, so I am here to answer any questions. As you know, this is a petition article, so it is on... Up to them to complete the second petition for the project to move forward.
Okay. Do we have anybody here?
We do.
Okay. You can come up one by one and just state your name and with your questions.
Yeah, sure.
Because you've got Catherine here, so...
Okay. I don't know, you know, what level of detail... What level of detail of questioning is appropriate. I'm not familiar with sitting in a forum such as this.
Whatever you want to ask. It's going to be your road.
My name is Kevin Donovan. I'm at 21 Barbary Circle, and it's a big deal for me. It's like 20, 25 grand.
It is.
I don't have that sitting, you know, under the pillow or anything like that, so... So I'm just learning about this plan that apparently was available at the Selectmen's office. I have not seen that plan, so is that a plan that is written in stone or is that a plan that is subject to revision or to comment? I haven't seen it. I don't know what that looks like.
So the plan is... At this stage of the process, it's just the taking plan, so it shows the existing road layout as well as some additional easement areas the town is proposing to take for drainage purposes. So this is the set-in-stone plan. The actual road work, if the petition moves forward through the next stage, we would then fine-tune, I guess, what the actual construction plans would look like.
Okay.
So this is strictly the taking plan.
The taking plan, meaning easements, meaning...
Correct.
If we need to expect that something on our property is going to be dug up or, you know, it's going to become road or is going to become underground drainage, something of that nature.
Right. So I guess just to explain, so again, I don't have plans to look at other than the taking plans, but we would propose to rebuild the road in place. The only change would be at your entrance into the neighborhood where you have a divided entrance, one lane in, one lane out. We would eliminate that and just do a two-lane entrance. I spoke with the fire department. They had issues with the narrowness of the entry, and I know we have issues with DPW for plowing when we do the roads, so we would eliminate that divided entry. Otherwise, the road would be rebuilt in place with additional subsurface drainage installed in primarily the locations where there is existing drainage, but we would be adding additional capacity.
Okay. So where this island, the current entrance island is currently, you're saying, that would just all become pavement? We'd have...
No. So... So I'm... Again, we don't have the plans, but I'm guessing that just because of the alignment that the southern side of the road would become the two-lane entry-exit, and the north side would just be revegetated.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is there anything special happening? We have a couple of, like, sharp corners because our circle, quote-unquote, for Barbary Circle is really not a circle. It's a trapezoid, really. So is there anything happening on those sharp ends of the trapezoid where that's being softened, or can we expect that that's going to remain the same?
At this point, and again, I guess that is a detail that we could work with the neighborhood on. We don't plan to change the radius at those entrance or these... Those intersections, but if that is an issue with the neighborhood, then we certainly could take a look at that.
Yeah. I mean, I prefer it to stay the way it is. Thank you for those answers. May I ask, like, if we... So my understanding is the next phase of this is the neighborhood needs to vote 50% plus one for this, and if that happens, then, you know, we have, you know, the project's going to happen, right? So the ownership changes and... Go ahead, I cut you off.
Yep. So, right, so it's a second petition that would be signed by the majority of the property owners that would go to another town meeting, so the next available town meeting. So if the second petition was signed and turned into the town manager's office by, I think, the second Monday in July, then it would go on to the October town meeting, and then you'd have the vote at town meeting.
Okay. And if that were to all go in the affirmative, when would we expect that the roads would be actually reconstructed or, you know, repaved or whatever we're referring to this as?
So I guess, under that scenario, is... The money is available immediately, so depending on what other projects the town may have already scheduled, it could... Drainage work could start as soon as next fall. Worst case, it would be spring of 2026 would be the start, and then you could anticipate about a year construction.
Okay. Thank you. And is there any opportunity to coordinate other underground work with this planned work? For example, fiber optics or... I know that, you know, there's a plan within the town for, you know, public wastewater, right? So I'm realistic enough to know that that wastewater's not coming down to Barbary Circle anytime soon, and it sounds like the roads would happen ahead of time, but the last thing we want to do is get brand-new roads and then start digging them up either for, you know, the wastewater or for some other needs that we have, for example, you know, fiber optics and things of that nature.
Sure. So wastewater is... So we have the same interest. We would not want to tear up a road and then rebuild it and have something happen within a, you know, less than five years. So this neighborhood is not in the next two phases of the wastewater plan, so wastewater would not be coming into this neighborhood for a little bit. Fiber optics, that's not something that the town would pursue. If that's something that the neighborhood was interested in, then I guess it would really be on you to pursue that with a vendor and then reach out to try to coordinate that, but that is not something that the town would move forward with for your neighborhood.
Let's see. The payment from the homeowners, that final amount would be provided to us? Like, I think the letter that we received said it shall not exceed a certain amount.
Perhaps.
So that's nice to know that there's a not-to-exceed amount, but when would that actual amount be determined, and then when would we be on the hook for paying that?
So the amount in the letter you received, as you mentioned, is the maximum amount of the betterment. You would know once the construction was complete. Once the construction's complete, I notify the town manager's office. They work with the assessor and treasurer to then move forward with the betterment. It depends on the timing. It could be a year to... A year and a half after completion before you saw it on your next tenth tax bill, and it is an up-to-20-year betterment, so it's up to individual property owners. They can, you know, pay over the full 20 years. They can pay it off, you know, in a lesser number of years.
Okay. And that was another follow-up question. Can... If we decided on, say, a 20-year plan, that's a decision for each homeowner, right?
Individual, yes.
And if we decided, say, I decided to go for the 20-year plan, and then five years in, I'm like, I'm tired of this thing, I want to pay it off, that's okay?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And then there was a... The letter also mentioned that there's this not-to-exceed construction amount that would be... The homeowners would be on the hook for. Divided by 20 property owners equals the amount per property owner, but there are only 19 property owners in the, you know, in this community. I was wondering, is that an error or we do have a... I didn't... There's a plot, that's sort of a public plot. I didn't know if that was... If that 20th was for the public plot?
I'm not sure. I didn't see that number from...
I don't have a clue.
So we can follow up on that.
Thank you.
If it is divided by the number of property owners, if there's a town-owned parcel, the town does not pay a betterment, so it would... That lot, if it were town-owned, would not be included in the betterment.
We know who owns that lot?
I'm assuming, Kevin, that's probably the H. lot.
The H. lot owns it.
Because it's a separate lot, there is small tax paid on it.
Okay.
There isn't a home on that. It's a lot that leads down to the program.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I've taken up a lot of time. I think... I think...
No, you're fine. You're fine.
Yeah? Okay.
This is where you air it.
Okay. Yeah. Great. Because this is my one and only opportunity, right? That's so. Else is like, are you kidding me? But I think you've actually... I've got my list, and I think you've really addressed everything. Oh, so DigSafe came around, put little flags everywhere. Can we take them down?
Yes.
Okay.
So in trying to... As you know, your utilities are all underground, so in trying to determine whether or not we needed those additional areas for drainage, we did have the neighborhood dig safe, so yes, you can remove the flags.
Okay. Thanks. And this is really a minor point, probably not worth asking, but we currently have, like, a private property sign in the beginning at the entrance. That would have to go... Come down then, right? Because the town owns the roads then.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? You're all set? Anybody else in the audience? We're all set? Thank you, Catherine. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Now, we don't need to go forward on that. That's just the beginning stage. So it's come past 5:20 for a public hearing, proposed grant application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. Would you read it for me?
Town of Mashpee noticed a public hearing, FY 2025 Massachusetts CDBG Program Grant Application. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Monday, April 7th, 2025, at 5:20 to discuss the town's proposed grant application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, for funding from its FY 2025 Community Development Fund CDF Program and to report on the progress of the town's current FY 2024 Community Development Grant Program. Under the proposed FY 2025 CDF Program Grant, the town may apply for up to $850,000. The activity being considered for funding is housing rehabilitation. Other activities that may be eligible for funding include infrastructure, public facilities, planning and public social...
Excuse me. If you want to take your conversation out in the hall, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Planning and Public Social Service Programs. The grant application may include any of these activities as well as additional ones. Once awarded, the grant will be managed by the Mashpee Department of Wastewater Management under the oversight of the Select Board and the town manager. Depending on the specific project activity, the town, as grant recipient, may award a portion of the funding activities to be carried out by sub recipients. To comply with CDBG requirements, this hearing will also provide the public with an update on the progress of Mashpee's current FY 2024 CDBG Program. The public hearing will be held in the McCoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. The meeting room is accessible to persons with disabilities. Any person or organization so wishing will be afforded an opportunity to be heard. Comments and/or suggestions regarding the proposed activities or other eligible activities may be made at the hearing or before the hearing in writing to the Department of Wastewater Management, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass., 02649. The town encourages a broad spectrum of participation by residents and other interested parties. If you require a translator, an accommodation for hearing impairment, or other accommodation, contact the Department of Wastewater Management no later than Monday, March 31st, 2025, via telephone at 508-539-1400, extension 8578, or via email at afisher@mashbma.gov. Per order of the Mashpee Select Board, Carol A. Sherman, Chair.
Thank you, Michaela. Good evening again.
Good evening again. Wayne Dower, Community Opportunities Group, the town's CDBG consultant.
So basically, this is just to correct the public hearing notice that didn't go out in time for our grant application, so we did speak with ELOC, the Housing at HUD, and they were, you know, they allowed us... They're working with us in the application process. So this is just a requirement for the grant to get any feedback from the public and to just let you know about the status of the current grant.
Did you get any feedback?
Yes. We've got a couple... One application and some interest from people. Recently, we're going to be releasing a letter to every single resident in the town of Mashpee about the program and what they can do, and we put something out on Mashpee TV, so we're starting to release the information to the public.
And I actually had also received a phone call today from an interested citizen looking for additional information on the program. We have designed the flyer. It's with the company who would produce it and mail it. I'm hoping it starts ending up in mailboxes this week.
Any questions from the board? Rodney?
With the exception of the 15-day notice versus the 10-day notice, I believe it was, and the full reading of the notice, is there anything else that we need to cover tonight procedurally? I just want to be certain.
Exactly.
No. We're covered as best we can be. Based on my conversations with the state, there may be some special condition placed on the grant if it gets funded regarding future postings and making sure that public notice is sufficient, but no, that was the one... One trip up we had was a lack of time before the posting of the notice in the meeting being held.
Just want to make sure all the Ts across and the Is are dotted. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one. So again, this is just a reboot.
Yes.
Yes.
Just because we didn't...
Yeah, there were two issues. The full reading of the notice and then also...
Time.
We're typically accustomed to 10 days' notice, and they required 15, so we've corrected that, and I just wanted to make sure there were no other procedural issues.
Exactly. Any questions from the audience? None? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Now, we need a... Michaela's going to read the motion.
I move to submit a single activity, FY 2025 Massachusetts Community Development Grant Application for up to $850,000 to fund a town-wide housing rehabilitation program and authorize the Chair of the Select Board to sign forms as required to complete the application process.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also... I move to appoint Ashley Fisher, Water Quality Coordinator, as the Environmental Certifying Officer, the ECO, for the environmental review record for the FY 2025 MCDBG application.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela? Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Ashley, did you get the signature? So you need to...
Okay. Next, we have Kristi Santori from Cape Cod Commission, a year in review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. Kristi Santori, I'm the Executive Director at the Cape Cod Commission, of course, joined by Ernie Vergilio, the Cape Cod Commission Representative for the Town of Mashpee. I'd like to make a few brief remarks, and then certainly through the chair, like to give Ernie a few moments at the end of my remarks to make some comments, and just wanted to thank you also for continuing to reappoint Ernie to the Cape Cod Commission. But as you know, from time to time, I like to visit the Select Boards across the Cape, including the Bartlesville Town Council, to provide an update on some of the work that we're doing and share some information about our upcoming initiatives, and just to be available to answer any questions, really making sure that we can keep the lines of communication open. What I've handed out is our 2024 Year in Review. Some of you may have seen this already. It's available on our website as well. It provides an overview of some of our priority projects. It certainly isn't meant to be comprehensive in nature, but it does provide a high-level overview of some of our priority issue areas. But just to give you a little bit more detail on some of our main topics that we've been working on recently, as you know, we've been working on a regional housing strategy for quite some time, and in last year in May, we had the opportunity to release for the public our regional housing strategy for Cape Cod. In it includes a number of recommendations. Some of these are local zoning recommendations as well as a number of regional recommendations looking at new funding mechanisms and programs, zoning reform and streamlined permitting, and potentially new entities to support affordable and attainable housing. It also includes a number of resources to support the implementation of many of the strategies, things like multifamily design guidelines. We developed a series of model bylaws that can be implemented locally, and we also developed housing profiles for all 15 towns individually, as well as one for Bartlesville County that provides detailed information and data on demographics and, as well as detailed information on housing within each of the communities. We're working on the implementation of several of the recommendations within that plan currently, and I know our, some of our commission staff will be at the Mashpee Housing Committee tomorrow evening to share some of this work as well. One of our other priority projects last year and continuing into this year is our freshwater work, looking at the 890 ponds and lakes across the region. And we released the draft freshwater strategy for Cape Cod in February. We put that out for a public comment period. We're now reviewing those public comments and incorporating those and look forward to releasing the final freshwater strategy for Cape Cod within the next several weeks. Like the housing strategy, the freshwater strategy also includes a number of resources to support implementation at the local and regional level. So things like pond buffer guidance that can really help not only homeowners but municipalities as they look to preserve and protect their ponds through responsible landscape management. We also developed a water quality data portal, which is an interactive map-based online tool that allows users to explore water quality data within their communities. This is an expansion of the coastal water quality data portal that we developed a few years ago that you're probably familiar with, and it now incorporates a comprehensive look at the freshwater data that we've been collecting with a number of partners as well. The Regional Pond Monitoring Program was a critical element of the freshwater initiative itself, and I am pleased that the funding for this program is, is going to continue past 2025. Recently, the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board voted to provide freshwater pond monitoring in addition to the funds that they've dedicated to coastal water quality monitoring over the past several years. And certainly pivoting from freshwater to wastewater and coastal water quality, as you know, we provide administrative and technical support to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board, and that board alone just last year dedicated nearly $65 million in subsidies for water quality projects and wastewater projects across eight communities. I certainly want to thank Select Board Member Michaela Wyman-Columbo for her participation on this board and certainly for your leadership in addressing water quality and wastewater issues in our region. In 2024, I believe Mashpee received about $12.5 million in subsidy for the Phase 2 Treatment and Collection System. The Intended Use Plan for 2025, the draft was released, includes nearly $372 million in eligible projects for the Cape, which is great progress for our region. We're awaiting the final Intended Use Plan, hopefully sometime within the next several weeks. A lot of the work that we do at the Commission is also looking at our transportation systems and networks, and certainly, of course, the canal bridges replacement program. A total so far of about $2.4 billion for fun, in funding has been secured, about $1.72 billion in federal funds and $700 million from the state. The Department of Transportation at the state mass DOT has made some recommendations for the approaches to the new bridges and some of the interchanges that will connect the adjacent communities. All this information is available on their website. We know permitting is underway, and we do anticipate that construction on Phase 1, which would be the replacement of the Sagamore Bridge, could begin in 2028. We at the Cape Cod Commission are also developing a Vision Zero Action Plan, which is an initiative to improve roadway safety and address traffic fatalities. This is a nationwide program, and we're pleased to be bringing it here to the regional and local level. Completing this action plan will actually make all 15 towns eligible for Safe Streets and Roads for All Implementation Grants, so really leveraging federal funding to implement some of these strategies here locally. The, there were several public meetings held throughout the first week in April, including a meeting that we held at the Mashpee Town Library. We're also supporting the Transportation Improvement Program. So we support the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or the MPO, and its advisory group, which is the Cape Cod Joint Transportation Committee, or the JTC, in the development of some of the key transportation planning documents for the region, including the FY 26 to 30 Transportation Improvement Plan, which is the TIP. And this really serves to prioritize roads, bridges, transit projects for implementation over the course of the next five years. We anticipate a draft of the plan being released for public comment sometime in late April. It will include about $375 million in projects across all 15 Cape communities. So we're certainly looking forward to putting that document out for public comment and finalizing that hopefully towards the end of May. Much of our work in last year and certainly continuing into this year is looking at climate and coastal resiliency efforts. We've completed a series of model bylaws and regulations to promote resiliency in the floodplain, not only today but into the future, and we'll look forward to continue to collaborate with communities that are interested in potentially implementing some of these model bylaws. And we also, last year, had the opportunity to update our comprehensive economic development strategy for the region. So the Bartlesville County Economic Development Council, as well as the Cape Cod Commission, approved this plan. We then submitted it to the Federal Economic Development Administration for their approval. And this year, we'll be looking to advance many of the initiatives that are contained within that economic development strategy, the priority actions. So those include things like incentivizing year-round housing for our communities, simplifying appropriate housing development in the right locations, advocating for the replacement of the canal bridges, among, among a number of other economic development priorities. And I just wanted to recognize too that we know that you're moving forward with your local comprehensive planning update process, and we provided some feedback on an initial draft last year, and we're looking forward to that continued coordination as the town moves forward. And then lastly, we, as you know, have a regional policy plan that we update about every five years, and we launched the regional policy plan update process last fall. And some of the areas of focus for this update are really encouraging housing in the right places, promoting reuse and redevelopment, preserving natural areas, economic resiliency, climate action, and infrastructure. So there will be certainly opportunities for continued stakeholder engagement, and we anticipate drafts will be available by hopefully early summer, and then that will be put out for a lengthy public comment period. And then finally, I, of course, again, just wanted to thank Ernie Vergilio, the Dean of the Cape Cod Commission, for his dedication, and I would say more importantly, for his leadership on the Commission as we address many of the significant challenges that are facing our region. And more and more, we're seeing complex and complicated regulatory projects, and he's really been a leader in really helping the additional commission members make some of these really critical and important decisions for our region. So thank you for continuing to appoint him, and I want to really just thank him for his commitment and dedication to the Cape Cod Commission, and just defer a few moments of time to Ernie.
Thank you very much, Kristi. Thank you very much for selecting. I believe I'm going on my 26th year. And I've enjoyed every single moment of it. I traveled from Owen to Woods Hole to Provincetown many times. When we used to travel to our commission meetings, our hearings throughout the Cape, we actually would go to each town for those hearings, and I can't tell you how many I attended, but there were plenty, and I enjoyed every single one of them. And I learned a lot from every single one of them throughout the process and really acquired the knowledge of what the Cape, all over the Cape, the full Cape, really needed in its future. And I tried to maintain that with new members and members who lasted a few years. I've talked with them a lot and tried to keep a little bit of balance, is what I like to call it, and, and like I said, I've really enjoyed it. But I would like to say this. My dad always told me, always be with a good leader. And I'm going to tell you this, all my years of serving, Kristi, you've been outstanding. Your staff is just incredible, and our team there is the best. And I'm so happy for it at my age, because at my age, I hope I can stay a lot longer. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ernie. Any questions? I have, I have one question, Kristi, and I, I don't know if you can answer it. About two and a half weeks ago, we got a letter from the Mass DOT and SandTag Consulting Services. They want to reconstruct around the rotary and do a pedestrian walkway and bike path. And I don't know if you, I know you were working years ago on the rotary in Mashpee. I didn't know if you had seen what they have sent us.
I am not familiar with that personally, but we do have a transportation team that likely will know something about that, and so I'm happy to follow up with you directly.
That'd be good. Thank you. Michaela? Any questions?
I, I don't, I've been at a similar presentation with Assembly Delegates. I just want to give a real plug to the interactive database for the pond quality and the pond monitoring, monitoring that's extremely helpful, as well as the new tools looking at coastal resiliency and looking at the flood zones and, and what we should be anticipating in the next five, 10, and 20 years. I think as we move forward with any kind of development, those tools will be invaluable. Your team has also been invaluable in presentations that they've given, I know, here in Mashpee and in different places, to really drive home the importance of coastal resiliency with hot data. So, thanks.
Thanks. Anyone else?
A couple of questions. As far as, kind of what's the temperature of the state? Are they going to step up and do something about the fresh waters? I know with the nitrogen plans, we've been hyper-focused on coastal regions and not so much on the fresh waters. So is the temperature kind of changing at the state level? Are you hearing anything as a commission?
So that's a great question. So a lot of our focus over the many several years has been around water quality funding for coastal resiliency and coastal resources and addressing our wastewater challenges. We were really pleased to see the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund dedicate some of that funding now to freshwater monitoring, which I think is a really critical step towards really making sure that we can implement strategies in our freshwater lakes and ponds. We at the Commission, now that we have a strategy that's been drafted and we're finalizing now, we're really looking at opportunities to apply for additional funding for some of these implementation strategies and to support the communities in applying for some of those funding opportunities. So I think the short answer is yes, we're very hopeful that there will be some additional funding dedicated to freshwater, especially now that we have got a comprehensive look at the water quality that we're facing here in the region and some of the strategies that we think will be most impactful on the Cape.
Has, has the commission looked at, when they redo these new bridges, if they were to put tolls on those bridges and capture? So we have an influx, a significant influx of terrorism, tourists that come to the Cape. The state appreciates and benefits from all the tax revenues and everything else that comes from the influx of terrorists during the summer months. Why shouldn't the Cape capitalize on the influx of people and dedicate the funds that come from that to helping towns on the Cape solve the wastewater issue and supplement the SRF funding?
I think that is something that I've heard maybe explored, that's probably outside of the work that we would do, but I think that there are probably others that may be looking at similar mechanisms that have worked in other areas and what might be appropriate here in the region. But that's not something that we're currently working on at the moment.
If, if the, if the commission could kind of support that with any kind of data, I have full confidence in all the staff. You have a lot of talented individuals there and capable of, you know, extrapolating data and things that could maybe show kind of what kind of money that would bring in to support coastal resiliency. The Cape's a unique area. It's a unique environment. You know, the cookie cutter approach to regulations at the state level don't recognize the unique nature of the Cape and, but yet the state benefits greatly from all that the Cape has to offer. We have to preserve it and protect it so that future generations appreciate it in a pristine condition and not continue allowing the Cape to deteriorate from an environmental perspective. So yeah, I'd love to see more on that. The other item I was wondering was, in the housing production plan and other housing initiatives, is there any kind of incentives or assistance in helping to kind of incentivize ADUs as a mechanism? Is there language that helps towns navigate that?
So in the regional housing strategy that we developed last year, there are a number of recommendations, and ADUs is certainly one of those recommendations. If you take a look at the implementation plan within the strategy itself, there are some opportunities where we can provide that type of localized technical assistance to communities. We do have a model bylaw for accessory dwelling units, and I know that this is something that the state is really looking to continue to pursue across the region. It's not going to solve all the housing challenges, of course, but it is one component of the strategy that we think can be very useful.
In redevelopment projects, are we incentivizing and trying to put pressure on people to do the solar canopies in built environments? It bothers me sometimes when I see solar being put in greenfields, when we have so many built environments that are open parking lots and it's a lot of built space that could actually provide renewable energy. I'd rather preserve our green spaces in wooded areas for the animals and other habitat that rely on those wooded areas. I think the, the state actually really went in all in on renewables, but they didn't have the foresight to actually discourage people from destroying greenfields for the purpose of green energy. So they've kind of put it in a position where the woods don't stand a chance with regards to, you know, putting in new green, new solar can, solar farms in wooded areas. And I hope that the Cape, because we have limited wood conservation lands in wooded areas, the Cape's taken a different position on that.
I will say through the chair that the regional housing strategy itself has a significant focus on redevelopment and incorporating considerations for green infrastructure and climate resilient infrastructure, so making sure that new housing developments are addressing our other regional challenges at the same time and that the focus is really around redevelopment where it's appropriate and where we have that infrastructure in place. So really making sure that we can address these multiple regional challenges that we're facing, because you can't talk about housing without talking about wastewater, without talking about resiliency measures. So they are, they are all related, and we do want to make sure that we are protecting and keeping the sensitive resources and natural resources protected. So I understand completely, and that is many, that's woven throughout many of the goals within the housing strategy itself, as well as a lot of our other regional plans.
I, I was told that the commission's working with Mass Development on the regional housing strategy of the governor, and I was wondering if there was any kind of update as to where discussions are with the base and the governor's housing strategy in the Cape Cod Commission's regional housing plan.
So the regional housing strategy itself has a recommendation to explore the potential for housing opportunities on joint base Cape Cod. I would have to defer to Mass Development on their interactions with the, with the master planning process that I anticipate will happen over the course of the next several months or so at the base. But certainly, you know, I think that consider, taking into considerations opportunities for additional housing development out there might make sense. But I do think that Mass Development would be the best person, you know, agency to, to respond to that type of a question. Certainly, we will be engaged in that process and will be hopefully working to ensure that the right amount of community outreach is happening as well, so that the neighboring towns and communities can be engaged in the process.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Nice to see you all.
Thank you both. Your efforts.
Thank you.
Okay. Renew and approval, review and approval of special event permit applications. We have one for Peters and Weeding Wedding, April, Friday, April 11, 2 to 5. There's no ring date. This event will be held at the Mashpee Community Park at the gazebo, expecting 250 guests, ceremony, and pictures only.
Excuse me.
This is actually for 2026.
Should be the 26, 2026, not 25. It's very rare we get a request over a year in advance. That was a mistake on our part, but it is, it is a valid request. It's just for 2026.
If we're able to just put it off till next year.
Yes, so if you can just vote for it for 2026.
Okay, so we can vote for it now for 2026?
Yes, oh yeah, yeah.
Motion to approve Peters Whedon Wedding, Friday, April 11, 2026, from 2 to 5 p.m., to be held at the Mashpee Community Park Gazebo.
All right. That's a motion.
That's a motion.
A motion, a second. Just curious, do we make sure that April 11 is true to 2025 or 2026?
It's 26.
All right, it's just the year that's wrong.
The year is wrong, that's all that's wrong.
All right, so I have no other.
You can't fault them for not planning.
No, that's true.
He's not likely.
They're on it.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and congratulations. Okay, department recommendations. Special event, peaceful protest, respect our constitution, voters rule, not the alud group, Saturday, April 26, 2025, 11:30 to 2:30, no rain date, at the Mashpee Rotary, Grassy. Oh, can't do the Grassy Center. It says Grassy Center preferred, expecting 50 to 250 people. Do we have anybody here?
They did state that they were okay if we had to go outside.
Yeah, we can't, you can't do it inside the Rotary.
No, that was an error, yeah. We definitely be outside, yes. And the time would also change, it would only be from 12 to 1.
12 to 1, okay. I need a motion?
Motion to approve, respect our constitution, gather.
Thank you, David.
Second.
Okay, Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
John?
Yes, and it's April 26 from 12 to 1 is?
Yes.
Okay, as stated.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, review and approval of appointment to the following. Affordable Housing Committee, reformation of appointment, November 18, 2024. Denise, is she here, Denise?
I don't know. This is.
We had her come in.
Okay, so let me just explain. We're just looking for you to essentially reaffirm what you've already done. This process has already been taking place. The person was appointed, the person was inactive. Long story short, now she wants to be active.
Be active, right.
So she never resigned, you never accepted her resignation. And if you could just reaffirm this, there's no question in regards to her status. That's all I'm asking for.
That's fine.
Motion to reaffirm the appointment of Denise Jefron to the Mashpee Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And this one is a discussion of proposed select board letter of support. The Community Health Center wants to put canopy, solar canopies, over the parking lot. So this is just a letter of support for them to do that.
Motion to approve?
Second.
As presented?
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Did you set that up?
Yes, we set that up pretty good.
Ball full of apocalypse.
Okay. So we have a public comment. Chris Ball.
Chris Ball, 83, Quinna Quisadab. I'm here as a longtime resident and voter in the town of Mashpee. Thank you, Madam Chair and Select Board. I'm not representing Mashpee TV tonight, I'm representing myself, I want to be clear, that it's come to my attention and many other people in the town of Mashpee with the election season coming up, that there's been a lot of inappropriate behavior, comments, suggestions that I find very distasteful, and that's my opinion along with many others. I feel that it's inappropriate in our town. We have many people that come to volunteer their time. We have enough trouble getting boards and committees to fill up because maybe we don't have leadership that, and I'm not speaking of the boards we have now, but maybe we don't have the leadership that we should, that they say is professional and they don't want to be part of it. I say that harassment and bullying is not to be tolerated, and I urge everybody in this town to keep in mind that the people that are volunteering their time, that's the most precious thing we have is time, because we don't know how much we have. And it should be respected, and we should handle it accordingly. State your position, your agenda, in a positive and respectful way. Don't let us fall to the way the rest of the world is going. I urge everybody to vote to not only look at their candidate's agenda, but also look at the character of that person and decide if that's what they want to represent them and where that will take us. Thank you for your time.
Irene? How are you tonight?
Hello. Irene Chekovitch, Sunset Strip, and I'm current president of the Mashpee Environmental Coalition. Tonight, I would like to read the following public service announcement. The Mashpee Environmental Coalition, in partnership with Catherine Laurent, DPW Director, will hold our second annual Earth Day event on Saturday, April 19, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Mashpee Senior Center. This free event will again feature textile recycling, secure shredding, and the distribution of composting information in containers. Plus, new this year, unwanted media storage items can be dropped off for recycling, including floppy disks, which I have a ton of, 8-track and cassette tapes, CDs, DVDs, memory sticks, and external hard drives. With regard to the textile recycling component of this event, due to the current solid waste crisis in Massachusetts, since November 2022, it is now illegal to throw clothes and textile items into the trash. An estimated 95% of all textiles dropped off for recycling can either be reused or repurposed. So on April 19, acceptable textile items, even if they're ripped, stained, or one of a pair, include footwear and clothing, even boots, sneakers, and if I may say so, undergarments, household items such as bedding, towels, non-foam pillows, table linens, and small rugs, and accessories like gloves, belts, scarves, bags, and stuffed animals, both for children and pets. All these items must just be clean, dry, and placed in a bag. Please note, however, that there are a few items that cannot be accepted, such as mattresses, foam products, lawn or furniture cushions, carpet remnants, or wet or contaminated material. This Earth Day recycling, shredding, and composting event aims to provide a free service to our residents while helping to save limited landfill space and reduce our disposal costs. Additional information may be found at our website, www.mashpemec.us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lasan Reports. Tom? David?
None at this time.
Michaela?
I have nothing at this point.
Nope. I'm good, too. Water quality updates?
Nope. Not at this point.
Town manager updates.
Just want to inform everybody that the rollout of Phase One, in terms of the connections, the notices, should be in the mail, in flyer form, and it describes the hookup process. And also wanted to announce something that probably everybody already knows. The state has extended the authorization for allowing the public bodies to hold remote or hybrid meetings through June of 2027. And the Barnstable County Home Consortium Advisory Council needs a member after Gary Shulman resigned as the town of Mashpee representative. And I have information on that if you need it. And I also wanted to announce that the MTV report is available to all select board members. We have a copy up in the office. If you want a copy, then we'll provide one. If you want it sent to you electronically, we can do that, too, but obviously, we want to abide by the public records law. And also, as a friendly reminder, this Thursday at 6:30 at the high school auditorium will be a public information session regarding the new police station, and everybody will be there that will be able to articulate the specifics of the plan. That's it.
Okay, now it's Thursday at what time?
6:30 at the auditorium.
At the high school. Okay. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.